Good evening. The May 12 meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Kelly?
Present.
Councilmember Harris? Is she online?
No.
Oh, she's not here today. Councilmember Isles?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns? Keelby here shortly. Councilmember Sufferden?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers?
Here.
Councilmember Hidakakis?
Here.
Mayor Biss?
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. There is no need for approval of virtual council member participation, so we will take a pass on that. The next item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations. On the initial agenda, there were four. I think we're down to two because of scheduling conflicts. Two of them are going to be delayed. The first, though, which we are doing, is Evanston's Protosmobil Day. That proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Evanston's Protosmobil has been a joint program of the Greater Chicago Food Depository, providing the fresh produce, the City of Evanston, providing the facility for distribution, most recently at Robert Crown, and Interfaith Action of Evanston, providing the army of volunteers required for food distribution. And whereas Evanston's Protosmobil began in December 2012, and since then has operated on the second Tuesday of every month, even during COVID, the Evanston Protosmobil continued to operate without missing a beat. And whereas for many years Mary Beth Roth has been the organizer of the Protosmobil and its large cadre of committed volunteers, with an average of 35 volunteers at each distribution, all working three to four hours each month, represents nearly 20,000 hours of volunteer time over the 12-plus-year period. And whereas there have been hundreds of individual volunteers showing up in all kinds of weather and always there with a smile to register guests, unpack food crates, distribute fresh produce, and help guests carry heavy food-filled boxes. And whereas in 2024, some 90,293 pounds of fresh fruits and vegetables were distributed to 8,762 people, in recent years, Interfaith Action's SNAP-GAP program began to supplement the produce distribution with items not covered by SNAP benefits, such as soap, laundry detergent, toilet paper, and more. And whereas the Greater Chicago Food Depository is discontinuing the Evanston Protosmobil as it shifts its focus to supporting permanent food pantries. And whereas the Tuesday, May 13 distribution, tomorrow's, will mark the 150th and final offering, now therefore I do hereby proclaim May 13, 2025, as Evanston's Protosmobil Day in the City of Evanston, and thank the Greater Chicago Food Depository and Interfaith Action of Evanston for this joint program, and express tremendous gratitude to Mary Beth Roth and the many volunteers who contributed to the Evanston Protosmobil. And some of the folks who have been working very diligently on this truly, truly wonderful community effort are here to receive this proclamation, to receive all our appreciation. I'm going to ask Councilmember Isles to step down with me, as he's been a pivotal part of this effort as well. And I would just ask everyone here to thank Mary Beth Roth and the volunteers for their really, really wonderful efforts. And the other proclamation is for Jewish American Heritage Month. I believe also no one is here to receive this proclamation this evening as well, but there's been an effort in the face of rising antisemitism for more municipalities to engage in this, which I think is a very appropriate act. So let me just read this proclamation as well. Whereas the biblical and contemporary history of the Jewish people and the enduring value of the Jewish faith were vital sources of inspiration for the founding of the United States, the civil rights movement, America's global leadership, Americans' commitment to social justice, and many of our country's most central tenets. And whereas Jewish Americans have contributed to the development of various sectors of American society, including the arts, business, government, education, social justice, and public service, advancing the values of freedom, equality, and opportunity. And whereas the Jewish community has faced historical struggles, including discrimination and persecution, but has continually demonstrated resilience, compassion, and commitment to justice and peace. And whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is an annual celebration of the history and contributions of Jewish Americans, providing an opportunity to recognize the enduring legacy of Jewish culture and faith in the United States. And whereas Jewish American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to reflect on the accomplishments and contributions of Jewish Americans and promotes understanding, acceptance, and respect for all cultures and religions. And whereas 320,000 Jewish people call the Chicago area home, now therefore I do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month, and encourage the citizens of Evanston to celebrate Jewish American Heritage Month through education, reflection, and the promotion of cultural understanding and recognition of the profound and lasting contributions of Jewish Americans to our city and the nation. And as I indicated, the other two items that initially appeared on the agenda have been balanced only because of scheduling conflicts related to the individuals who were being recognized, and they'll both be on the agenda on May 27 for our next city council meeting. That concludes my announcements and proclamations, and the next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. Clerk Mendoza, I have three quick items here. First up, I wanted to recognize Public Service Week. Public Service Recognition Week is celebrated the first week of May since 1985 to honor the people who serve our nation as federal, state, county, local, and tribal government employees. I'm honored to serve alongside hundreds of outstanding employees who serve our residents and community 24/7, 365 days a year. I want to express my gratitude for the hard work and dedication of our city staff. We will continue to honor staff for their contributions during the month of May. Next up, Mayor, we have a stormwater master plan presentation, and Civil Engineer Bridget Nash is here to present.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for having us here today. My name is Bridgette Nash. I'm a senior project manager with the City of Evanston, and I'm here with our stormwater consultants Jeff Wickencamp and Anna Calcasey with Hay and Associates. We're here today to discuss the stormwater master plan. I'll start with a little bit of background. The City of Evanston has a combined sewer system, which means that sanitary sewage and storm water are conveyed through the same pipe network. This is a common installation in older cities. However, during heavy rains, the system would typically become overwhelmed, resulting in street flooding, basement backups, and discharges to Lake Michigan. In order to resolve these challenges, the city implemented the Long Range Sewer Improvement Program in 1990, which included the installation of relief sewers, separate storm sewers, and separate storm sewers through some locations in the city, and the installation of sewer restrictors in our combined sewer inlets to limit the flow during rain events. The project was completed in 2008 and was highly successful in reducing surface flooding and basement backups. In 2018, the city adopted the Climate Action and Resilience Plan, which recognized that climate change was likely to bring more frequent and intense storms. CARP called for the development of a comprehensive plan for stormwater management. In response, city staff created the Stormwater Management Guide in 2019, which outlined the goals for the city's future stormwater management. A major part of that guide was to develop a stormwater master plan based on detailed hydrologic and hydraulic modeling. The city released an RFP, and the contract was awarded to Hay and Associates on April 27, 2020. The primary objective of the study was to develop hydrologic and hydraulic model of the city's complex stormwater system to identify and define needed system improvements under existing and future storm conditions. Hay did a lot of really great work in developing the stormwater model, and it's now used as a valuable and powerful tool in evaluating system performance under current and future needs. And it will help to guide our future infrastructure improvement investments. So with that, I'd like to pass it off to Jeff to discuss their model build.
Thanks, Bridgette. So our goal tonight is really just to tell you a little bit about our study, why it's important, what it's going to be used for in the future. So in 2023, Hay and Associates, working with city staff, with Bridgette and her team, we completed the work to build the stormwater model for the city, and then we also wrote the stormwater management plan. And so as stormwater managers, anytime we're undertaking a large study like this, we're going to use a modeling tool to represent the sewer and the sewer systems throughout the city. And we talk about two major areas. And so as I kind of walk through the components of the model and why it's so important for the city, we'll talk about hydrology and hydraulics. Hydrology is the rain. You know, so we're always talking about how much did it rain when it falls on the ground surface, how much infiltrates, where does that water go, how much becomes stormwater runoff. And then the hydraulic piece of the model, which they run together, is representing all the different sewers, the complex sewer system, through the city system. So we used a tool called XP Swim to build the model. The hydrology piece, the city was broken into 9,500 catchments. And so what that means is each catchment was a little under an acre, about 2/3 of an acre to 3/4 of an acre in size. If you're relating that to a residential lot, that's about four or five residential lots. So when you think of the pieces, like representing the whole city, we're looking at it, on average, about every four or five houses is represented individually in this model, and the runoff from that area is going, being represented into the sewer system. And then in the sewer system itself, we represented 12,000 segments of pipes. So it's over 200 miles of combined sewer, storm sewer, relief sewer, all the different sewer systems that serve Evanston to collect rainwater and drain rainwater either into the Lake Michigan or the North Shore Channel or into the MWRD's sewer system. So we use both of those together, and our model represents both the rain and then how the water moves through the sewer system, so we can get answers about how the sewers work and how the stormwater management of the city can be managed, what are the improvements that are needed going forward. We were really fortunate to be able to do flow monitoring during this. So for three months in the summer of 2021, we installed two rain gauges and 23 flow monitors. We used that data to help us calibrate our model. So we captured two significant events in the summer of 2021, and then we fed that data into our model to make sure that the results we were getting from this very complex, large model matched what we were measuring at the outfalls of those pipes. So we had two primary questions and a third sort of supplementary question that we're trying to answer and what's summarized in the stormwater management plan. We're looking at the sewer surcharge risk, and this looks at the elevation of water in the sewer system and compares it to basement elevations. And what that tells us is what is the possibility that there's a basement backup or a flooding problem that might happen as a result of the sewer system? Then the second question we're answering is, is surface flooding or ponding on streets or intersections or places where the sewer system is inadequate to handle the flow, could those boundaries of water impact buildings? And could it flood or damage a building? Like, where would those areas in the city be? And then the last question, which is more answered just through the model and going forward, is as the city makes improvements, could we reduce the amount of stormwater runoff entering the sewer system and reduce the volume of combined sewer overflows into the waterways? So if you look at the plan, and these are my last two slides before Anna talks about what we've been doing with the model in the last two years, if you look in the stormwater management plan, we have two graphs or exhibits where we report the sewer performance. And one is this combined sewer that's broken into the north and south sections of the city. So we just showed one, for example, here. And every manhole in the whole city has a rating between the 2-year and the 100-year. And what that tells you is when that storm event happens, what are the chances that that structure could be responsible for basement backup? Is the water getting high enough to handle, to not cause flooding? Or is it high enough that it could potentially cause flooding? So each one, basically each manhole has a rating as to how well it's working in the city. And as we do projects and do street resurfacing and install water mains, staff is working with us to look at these areas and say, where could we make a storm sewer improvement that would help those areas? And then the last thing, and this was really good news for Evanston and partly attributable because, due to the long-range sewer plan that was done in the 1990s and the early 2000s, Evanston invested millions and millions of dollars in putting in those relief sewers, and they are operating very well for the city. There's very limited, relative to adjacent communities, limited flooding on the streets of Evanston. There's not a flood plain, there's not wide swaths of buildings that are subject to flooding. It really, compared to a lot of neighboring communities, looked quite good. There's a table showing some areas of concern that we have, and these exhibits show some of the problem areas that, again, some of the recommendations in the plan show going forward.
Thanks, Jeff. So I'm going to talk briefly about the recommendations that were included in the plan and then how the model is being used currently by Evanston. So we grouped the stormwater program recommendations into three categories. On the regulatory side, there were recommendations made on how the, sorry, to include more detention requirements for smaller building and parking lots, and require private property plumbing code compliance for new additions and at the point of sale. Recommendations for the private system included options to improve the level of protection against flooding. And recommendations for the public system included suggestions for the capital improvements program, sewer system monitoring, and some specific example concepts for a sewer improvement project, a surface flooding improvement project, and a green infrastructure project. So the model has been used for capital improvements to review the 2024 and 2025 annual capital improvement projects and provide project opportunities for improving stormwater at those locations. Three alley improvement locations with one storm sewer extension of 2,340 feet are included in the 2025 capital improvement plan, and 330 feet of new storm sewer along McDaniel Avenue will also be included as part of the water main and street resurfacing project Several green infrastructure projects were constructed last year, including permeable pavers along Main Street and permeable place surfaces at Independence and Laramore Parks. Mason Park was the example green infrastructure concept that was developed for the stormwater management plan. So this is a project that's currently in development to improve the park and transportation connectivity in the area, and the recommendations were made for green infrastructure to be incorporated as a compatible project element. A surface flooding project concept was developed for the southwest portion of Evanston. So this area of Evanston is somewhat unique. There's pre-regulatory development along the North Shore Channel, which was built several feet above natural ground, and has resulted in there being a lack of overland flow pass to the North Shore Channel for this area. So additional stormwater capacity would need to be installed to provide overflow capacity to the North Shore Channel for this neighborhood. So this project could include a new trunk sewer, local sewers, and high-capacity inlets. Level meters can be used as a way to monitor the water elevation in the system. They can be installed as part of project development. They can be used to investigate reported flooding, and they can be used to perform overall model maintenance to calibrate and verify the model. So this season, they'll be installed along Church Street in advance of a potential storm sewer project. And finally, as part of maintaining Evanston's investment in creating this stormwater model, the model will be updated every two to three years with any changes that have been made to the storm sewer system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Our last item is Director Flax has an update on Envision Evanston.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council, Clerk Mendoza, and City Manager Stowe. I'm Sarah Flax, Community Development Director, and I'm here to provide a brief update on the status of Envision Evanston 2045, the city's initiative to draft a new comprehensive plan and zoning code. I want to recognize the contributions of the Land Use Commission over the last six months as they've worked to revise the draft comprehensive plan. At this time, the Land Use Commission anticipates making a recommendation on the draft plan at its May 21 meeting. At their last meeting, they reviewed a series of proposed edits to the plan. That meeting lasted over five hours, which speaks to the level of care and depth that they brought to the conversation. A significant portion of the meeting was spent on housing, a topic that's generated a great deal of community interest throughout the process. The commission focused on how to balance increased housing choices and density with the preservation of our unique neighborhoods. There were a number of unanimous votes, including supporting ADU financing, streamlining the development review process, prioritizing housing near transit, creating a housing database to better understand supply and demand, and providing down payment assistance to first-time homebuyers. But there was also a lot of discussion around the policy relating to increasing the diversity of housing, which did not result in unanimous support. There was a proposal to remove language encouraging an increase in housing diversity across Evanston. The commission landed on an updated policy statement that reads, "Preserve and increase housing diversity and remove the action 'encourage a diversity of housing types throughout Evanston.'" Another key theme was how the plan reflects community engagement. The commission had a long discussion on how to ensure balanced representation of differing opinions. As a result, we'll be adding language, like some in support and some opposed, to reflect the range of perspectives, especially on sensitive topics like housing. Staff is now incorporating the Land Use Commission's edits in preparation for the May 21 meeting, where additional amendments may still be made. We will release an updated draft after the Historic Preservation Commission finalizes its recommendation on policy language requested by the Land Use Commission, which is expected to occur at their meeting tomorrow night. Once the Land Use Commission finalizes its recommendation, staff will prepare the final draft for council review. Looking ahead, staff is available to meet one-on-one with any of you if you'd like a deeper dive in the draft plan and the recent changes. We'll also be seeking council direction on the zoning code reboot, which is the next major phase of this project. We're open to your guidance and how best to approach that work, incorporating all the input we've received to date. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions or connect individually after the meeting.
Thank you, Director Flax, for that update. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
So we received email public comment from former council member Devon Reed about the rules, although that is in your inbox, and from John Kennedy, not in favor of a LUC appointment, and from four additional people in favor of that appointment, and one other. It's hard to figure out what they were in favor or not in favor. But all of those emails are in your public, in your emails. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This evening, we have right around 30 people signed up for public comments, so everyone will have a minute and a half. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, starting with Jennifer Drake, followed by Jenny Washburn, and then Kelly Fide.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Drake. I'm the sixth ward resident. I'm also a licensed professional civil engineer and structural engineer in the state of Illinois. I'm here to express my concerns on the appointment of Luke Harris-Farey for the LUC Commission. While his work is admirable and appreciated and needed, I reviewed his application, and he doesn't seem to have the necessary and relevant qualms to be on the committee. The intent, part of the intent of Envision Evanston, as we've heard, is to potentially result in upzoning and increased density. We need a qualified architect, engineer, planner, or contractor with that expertise. You may have seen the news report from the City of Portland recently, talking about upzoning there. And the individuals from the city represented spoke that as we see increased density, we have to think about how we update our water and sewer lines, and we need to think about how we update our transit lines. It goes much deeper than this. It goes to fire hydrants, it goes to traffic signals, it goes to very expensive items. And we just heard about the SWIP and the HNA studies that were performed here in Evanston. And they talked about climate change, and that is going to increase capacity, increase the need for additional capacity already. And as a civil and structural engineer, I understand it's not that simple to just say we want to increase all the capacity of our sewer and water, and especially as a transit professional, I understand how difficult it is to just go to CTA, Metro, and PACE when they're already at a fiscal cliff and say, we need increased transit service here in Evanston. So I urge you to consider, the issue is much more complex than supply and demand. It comes to engineering, architecture, planning, and we need certified people with the expertise to lead the commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jenny Washburn. He'll be followed by Kelly Fide, and then Corey King.
Hi, everyone. Jenny Washburn, first ward. Land use commissioners play a crucial role in shaping our city's future, and their decisions affect everything from housing and traffic to environmental impact and legal liability. That's why experience matters. An experienced commissioner understands zoning laws, planning principles, and how to balance economic development with community concerns. Without that background, we risk costly legal mistakes, inconsistent decisions, and missed opportunities to make our neighborhoods more livable and sustainable. As the saying goes, nothing is so permanent as a temporary government program or a bad appointment. The wrong person in the wrong seat can damage our institution for years. We must appoint commissioners based upon qualifications, not connections. Our community deserves a formed, competent leadership, especially in roles that have such lasting consequences. George Halick, who is here tonight, is the right person for the job. Also, the Evanston Code of Ethics requires council members to recuse themselves from any vote where there is a conflict of interest or even the appearance of one. If a council member is employed by an organization that may have ties, financial or otherwise, to a nominee under consideration, that presents a perceived conflict. To maintain public trust and comply with the code, the ethical course of action, Council Member Isles, is to disclose and also recuse yourself from the vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kelly Fide, who will be followed by Corey King, and then Tony Ray.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your service. I'm here to advocate for Luke's appointment. He has more experience in this area than the others that are currently appointed. He also brings skills that they don't have, communication skills that are incredibly finely honed, the ability to incorporate differing perspectives, and the ability to bring people who previously may have been polarized into conversation with each other for the kind of approach that benefits everyone. So these are very specialized skills that Luke brings that I don't think are all that present in the rest of the skill set in the committee, so strongly in favor.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Corey King, who will be followed by Tony Ray, and then Melissa Appeltz.
Good evening. Congratulations, all. My name is Corey King. I live in the second ward. I'm here to share my unwavering support for Pastor Luke Harris-Farey's appointment to the Land Use Commission. Pastor Luke is an intelligent, thoughtful, passionate community member who has a strong understanding of Evanston's affordable housing opportunities and challenges. Their experience as a renter in Evanston and with affordable housing developments will be invaluable, particularly given the current commission's dearth of expertise or perspective in affordable housing. My interactions with Pastor Luke have reflected his keen ability to listen carefully, respect other points of view, develop informed, educated opinions, and build consensus to support collective decision-making. Anyone who has been to a recent LUC meeting knows these skills will be a welcome addition. The Land Use Commission should not be reserved for those in Evanston whose sole goal is to continue Evanston's restrictive zoning approach, which ultimately seeks to protect to continue Evanston's restrictive zoning approach, which ultimately seeks to protect affluent neighborhoods at the expense of everyone else. The LUC needs members who understand and consider the potential impact of their decisions on equity, affordability, and housing choice for groups at the highest risk of housing instability. Pastor Luke will be an excellent voice on their behalf, and I encourage you to approve his appointment to the LUC.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tony Ray, who will be followed by Melissa Appelt, and then Paul Breslin.
I'm Tony Ray, and I'm in the First Ward. I'm here to support Pastor Luke Harris-Ferray. I think he has skills that we really need for the Land Use Commission. He knows how to negotiate, he knows how to compromise, he knows how to listen to other people, and he can make concessions. He also provides diversity. We need someone beside all the owners of homes here who's a renter, and we need younger people on this commission. I think he'd be a great asset, and I don't want to repeat what other people have already said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Melissa Appelt, who will be followed by Paul Breslin, and then Eduardo Gómez.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Interfaith Action's Advocacy Committee. We support Luke Harris-Ferray's nomination to the Land Use Commission. We believe Luke's background, shepherding projects through zoning issues, historic preservation negotiations, and neighborhood dialogues can help the Land Use Commission advance the City Council's goal of increasing affordable housing for all. As an Evanston renter, Luke offers perspectives on housing options for a sizable portion of the community who are not homeowners. With his combination of skills and lived experience, Luke can complement the extensive knowledge and expertise already available on the Land Use Commission in architecture, construction, real estate, urban planning, and more. Additionally, we believe Luke will contribute to the conversation with creative solutions and negotiations. Finally, Luke represents a generation of residents who will inherit the impact of decisions made by this Land Use Commission and City Council. We believe this forward-looking perspective will be an asset to the process. Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to support Luke's nomination to the Land Use Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Paul Breslin, who'll be followed by Eduardo Gómez, and then Omar Ansari.
Good evening. I'm just going to read what I wrote in a comment on the reporting on this nomination. Pariel Davis is absolutely right. The Land Use Commission is not a "we agree with the mayor" commission, or the "our hearts are in the right place" commission. It is a politically independent advisory board whose members offer the mayor and council the benefit of extensive knowledge and professional experience in urban planning, architecture, development, real estate, or engineering. If they criticize Invision Evanston, their criticism should be carefully addressed. The commissioners are not doing their job if they offer only praise. The Land Use Commission is not and should not become a rubber stamp for the mayor's agenda. I will add this, there is a cloven fiction, as William Blake would have called it, that on one side we have compassionate, loving people who want to help the underprivileged, and the other we have hard-hearted people who don't care. The most cogent criticisms of EE45 that I've heard came from Pariel Davis, who was under dais, from George Halick, who got canned, who has worked in his career at affordable projects, at mixed income projects, and the conversion of unused commercial space to residential. So, you know, calling these people enemies of affordable housing and trying to turn the Land Use Commission into the Affordable Housing Commission is inexcusable.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Eduardo Gómez, who will be followed by Omar Ansari, and then Jeff Barini.
Hi. I know I'm really late to the party, but first, I just want to say congrats to the city manager and our Corporation Council for their appointments to their respective roles. I'm glad to see two people that embody the best of our community, serving us as a whole, so congratulations to both of them. I'm here today because of a recent shooting that took place in the Second Ward on the block of 2300 Greenwood, and it's just caused a breaking point for a lot of people there. And so essentially, a man allegedly fired multiple rounds during a domestic dispute, just steps away from where children live and play. This isn't an isolated incident. That property has been a source of serious problems for over 20 years, escalating year after year. We appreciate the increased patrols, but clearly, that hasn't been enough. Families are living in fear, and that is just unacceptable. We're also concerned that at a recent community meeting, our safety concerns were reframed as an attack on the family that lives there, which simply is not the case. We want action that supports everyone involved while protecting our community, and so we are asking for you to take strong, immediate steps. And if we don't see progress, we will continue to come back until we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Omar Ansari, who will be followed by Jeff Barini, and then Jack Jordan.
Good evening, Evanston Leadership. I'm the resident of 1400 block of Fowler and 2300 block of Greenwood, Second Ward. Eduardo has already covered most of the point, but there are a few more points that concerns me as well. First of all, it is deeply concerning that the law enforcement had not yet recovered the firearm involved in that incident. The fact that a weapon is still unaccounted for poses an ongoing threat to public safety and could potentially be used in future criminal or domestic incidents. Also, the 2300 block of Greenwood has seen a rise in individuals running unauthorized car repair operations. This activity attracts non-residents who often engage in disruptive behavior, including loud profanity, open consumption of alcohol and drugs, and double parking on a busy street even during MLK school hours. This needs to be addressed with a zero tolerance policy. Also, I would like to know that what specific action the City of Evanston Leadership plans to take to curb violence in our neighborhood and ensure lasting peace and safety. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Barini, who will be followed by Jack Jordan, and then Ty Gibbs.
Good evening, Jeff Barini, Second Ward. I'd like to just urge the council to please select the best candidates available for any of the boards and commissions. We're discussing land use this evening, tonight, of course. I don't know Pastor Harris-Ferray, I don't know Commissioner Halick, but if you look at their respective backgrounds and resumes, clearly Commissioner Halick has far more experience, deep expertise in architecture and zoning, well beyond the other candidate. In addition, Commissioner Halick was, of course, a member of the Land Use Commission, so he has four years of experience there already, and in fact, is one of the initiators of the comprehensive plan. He was one of the ones leading the initial actions to redo the comprehensive plan. So I think we need to give that some consideration and some weight. And I ask you to please keep that in mind, please consider the best candidate for any of these positions, let the process play out, give it time, it may take a little longer, but have faith in the process that will best serve Evanston residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jack Jordan, who will be followed by Ty Gibbs, and then another person whose last name is Gibbs.
Hello, everyone. Want to say a quick welcome to the new council. Excited to see you all, like the new crib. I'm Jack Jordan. I'm the Executive Director at Climate Action Evanston, and we are a resident-run group that's existed for about two decades, supporting local climate action here in Evanston. Climate change, of course, intersects with land use, intersects with housing, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of the appointment of Pastor Luke to the Land Use Commission. I've got three reasons to support it. All deals with representation. First off, Pastor Luke has direct experience with affordable housing, which we could use more of on the Commission. As you all know, affordable housing and supporting affordable housing is a stated goal of this council, and Pastor Luke has past direct experience developing and managing affordable housing in Seattle, which I think makes him an asset to the Land Use Commission as this is a topic we could use some more expertise in. The second point of representation is that Pastor Luke is a renter. According to the U.S. Census, 43% of Evanston's population are renters, and we are nowhere near that representation on this council or on the Land Use Commission. My own organization is mostly led by homeowners, and we have seen how that has affected the equity of our own solutions we bring, so that's something we're trying to work on as well. The third is Pastor Luke's age. It's no secret we could use some more representation of younger folks on Invision Evanston. In 2045, for instance, I will be the ripe old age of 45. My high school kids that I work with day in and day out will be 35 or younger. To us, this isn't some far-off date, this is something that will squarely affect the rest of our lives, and it's really important that we have this sort of age diversity and representation. So for all these reasons, I hope you'll support Pastor Luke. Well, I've got all your attention because we're here on climate action purposes. We are in peak bird migration season right now, so please turn off those lights. We'll have 2.6 million birds moving through Cook County tonight, so please turn off your lights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ty Gibbs, who will be followed by T. Gibbs, and then Jeremy Esparza.
Good evening, City Council. I received a text here from the Second Ward Alderman, City of Des Plaines. It says the follows. "I am writing to you to share my experience with our relationship with the responsible bidder ordinance in the City of Des Plaines. We, with the implementation of our guidance and the ordinance, we have seen our construction projects come in on time, professionally, safely, and without costly extras. Having responsible bidder ordinance has helped mitigate our risk, not only as a city..." Oh, pardon me, "but as a council lately." I'm being sorry. Lastly, "I am proud to see our young residents directly benefiting from the apprenticeship program provided by the ordinance. I hope with the passage of the responsible bidder ordinance, you will find the same success here in Evanston." Thank you.
The next speaker is T. Gibbs, who will be followed by Jeremy Esparza, and then... So I think you signed up twice, sir?
Yeah, I think my brother might have put that... My brother was here, but he left.
Got it. Okay. In that case, the next speaker is... No, no problem. The next speaker is Jeremy Esparza, who will be followed by Kevin Davis.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jeremy Esparza. I'm a business agent for Labor's Local One. We represent about 14, 1500 construction workers, some of which live in Evanston, but a lot of which perform work in Evanston. And I'm here today to speak in favor of the responsible bidder ordinance. This was introduced way back when, in March of 2024, to the MDW EBE Committee with Bobby Burns, and there's been a lot of development with it since, up until last APW meeting, where there were four areas where staff were to look at to determine what would be the best way to implement such an RBO. The first was around added value, so a general contractor that performs added value, which was defined, can be presented with a waiver. However, my opinion, general contractors already perform those scopes of work that the added value exemption would qualify a contractor to perform. And then moving forward, there's an apprenticeship standard, so any contractor that is bidding or procuring work has to be affiliated with an apprenticeship program that graduates five, on average, five apprentices per year for the past five years. That's not strictly union, however, to be completely candid, it almost always results in union contractors, because in Chicago, labor management coalitions collaborate to provide training for their members, depending on the craft. So there was a discussion whether there should be an experience waiver exemption. I do feel, though, that would create a lot of undue burden on staff, as how that would play out is any contractor that is prospectively bidding on work, that submits a bid, would have to also submit all of their employees, all of their pay history, to determine whether they have the requisite amount of experience in the construction industry. However, that doesn't necessarily equate to an apprenticeship program where somebody is learning the craft for two, three years. So again, if the intent is to increase the standards of quality while maintaining the option for local Evanston businesses, I would recommend a waiver exemption for those types of companies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kevin Davis. If Kevin Davis is no longer here, that will conclude the list of people who signed up in person to speak in person, and we move on now, as always, to those who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Lisa Delantoni, who'll be followed by Marybeth Roth, and then Sarah Peterson. I did not see Lisa here. In that case, we'll move ahead with Marybeth Roth, who will be followed by Sarah Peterson, and then Eduardo.
Good evening, again. I am here to support the appointment of Pastor Luke Harris-Ferray to the City of Evanston Land Use Commission. Pastor Luke has wide experience in from his posts in Seattle and now in Evanston at bringing people with diverse views together. In Seattle, Pastor Luke took on leadership when construction began on affordable housing apartments. He advocated listening with an open mind rather than attacking others for their views. In his own words, for four years, Pastor Luke witnessed issues with zoning laws, negotiations for historic preservation, and dialogue among neighbors, some of the critical issues surrounding affordable housing. Subsequently, Pastor Luke served part-time as housing case manager in that very same affordable housing apartment building. I have attended several Land Use Commission meetings this past year. Evanston is becoming more and more polarized. It's distressing. But the entire city of Evanston loses when people with talent and experience in creating affordable housing are not well represented on the Land Use Commission. The ability and experience of Pastor Luke to negotiate and bring opposing groups of people together with a goal of reaching consensus is a skill that is sorely needed on the Land Use Commission. If attempts to reach a consensus are absent or insincere, the results will further divide us. Please vote yes on the appointment of Pastor Luke Harris-Ferray to the Land Use Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sarah Peterson, who will be followed by a group who signed up as Sophie Milan, Alexandra McMaster, Aiden Reader, and Zach Zetek, followed by Eduardo.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Sarah Peterson, and I'm a resident of the Sixth Ward, and I'm here to offer my enthusiastic support from the Sixth Ward for Luke Harris-Ferray for Land Use Commission. And I was struck when I was listening to all the thoughtful public comments so far that before the meeting started, Sarah Flax was... Not before the meeting, but before public comment, she was mentioning the Land Use Commission and talked about how sensitive topics like housing, and it kind of gave me a little chuckle, because I feel like housing is the one thing that unites us. It's one thing that we all need. We all need a roof over our heads. We've all had experience living in a home or needing a home, wanting to find a place to live. And when I first met Pastor Luke, it was at the Racial Justice Bus Tour, where Dino Robinson gave us a tour to a group of interfaith Evanstonians around Evanston to look at the history of Evanston and how the land has been used over the years. And Pastor Luke and I co-led a small group afterwards of a diverse group of Evanstonians as we talked and grappled about our history and ourselves and our future. And so many people have already spoken to Pastor Youth's strengths, their calm demeanor and ability to listen and to take in a lot of perspectives, and I think that's so essential as we even saw how they've edited the comprehensive plan so far. They're a renter. 43% of Evanstonians are renters. It was shocking to me to learn that nobody on the Land Use Commission yet is a renter, so that really feels like a missing piece. And also, as a church leader, there are over 100 churches and synagogues and mosques. I think that's another important perspective of the way we use our land in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is, again, this group, Sophie Milan, Alexandra McMaster, Aiden Reader, and Zach Zetek, who will be followed by Eduardo, and then Scott Roberts.
Hello, council members. We are students at Loyal Academy and Willmett, and throughout this year, we've been working on an advocacy project around supporting the elder community and their lives.
Our ask today is a letter of support for a project that we have been developing for the past six months. In the States, about 1.7% of seniors reside in assisted living, and the majority of Americans claim that they would like to age well and at home. Unfortunately, as you continue to age, your mobility and ability to get around and continue day-to-day tasks declines, which requires assisted living. We are creating a program that is about $5,050 that would offer training... We are creating a program that is about $5,050 that would offer training services for nurses and home health aides. We are not asking you guys for the grant. We are going to be going to different nursing homes around the community, including the North Shore Senior Center, and asking them to donate in order to create this project. We are hoping that you guys would write a letter of support that we can bring before them to show that people who are well respected in the area agree with us.
The nursing program we plan to promote is called Care Academy, which is online. It's a nursing program that uses 75 hours of training program, including 58 hours of online work. This is $419 a month, and this helps 50 students each month. So we plan to use a plan that helps them finish this program in two months. And then by the end of the year, we'd have 300 nurses to use this program. Thank you so much for your time.
We've created one-pagers that we would like, if possible, we can give to all of you that provides an outline for our idea and all of the information and research behind it. The letter of support, there is an email on the page where you can write it if you decide that you like our idea.
Thank you very much. The city manager will distribute those. The next speaker is Eduardo, which may refer to Mr. Gomez, who already spoke. Okay, it looks like that's the case. In which case, we'll move ahead with Scott Roberts, who will be followed by Bruce Ennenbach, and then Carla Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. My name is Scott Roberts. I'm a resident of Third Ward. I enthusiastically support the appointment of Pastor Luke to the Land Use Commission as their informed advocacy, deep commitment to social justice, and compassionate leadership will enhance the commission's ability to balance technical expertise with community well-being. The Land Use Commission is tasked with making decisions in service of public health, safety, convenience, and the comprehensive general plan. Its work shapes the future development and redevelopment of our city and directly impacts the neighborhood character, affordability, and accessibility. As such, commissioners must bring not only technical acumen, but also a deep understanding of community needs and values. Citizen governance, such as this city council, benefits from a diversity of experience and backgrounds, including voices beyond architects, urban planners, and real estate attorneys, ensures the commission reflects the full diversity of Evanston's residents and addresses land use decisions in a holistic manner. Research from the American Planning Association underscores that diversifying planning and zoning boards leads to more equitable, innovative, and community-responsive outcomes. Members with varied educational, professional, and lived experiences help guard against groupthink and ensure that decisions serve all stakeholders. The Illinois Association of Local Government Planning Handbook further notes that planning commissions advocate for the best interests of the entire community, a goal best achieved when commissioners represent multiple perspectives, not just technical experts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bruce Ennenbach, who will be followed by Carla Sutton, and then Brian Hanson.
Good evening. Bruce Ennenbach, First Ward. My apologies in advance, but I'm going to be direct. Welcome to the Trump Administration Evanston Edition. Nominate ideological alignment rather than knowledge. Nominate loyalty rather than expertise. Nominate fealty to the man rather than to the people. Very sad, very sad. The question will be, will this city act like our House of Representatives and fall in line like lapdogs? We'll see. I certainly hope not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Carla Sutton, who will be followed by Brian Hanson, and then John Story Williamson.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, City Manager Stowe, and Mrs. Mendoza. I'm a Fifth Ward resident, and I stand in opposition to the candidate of Pastor Luke for the Land Commission. I'm a homeowner, and I have not been well represented as a small landowner in Evanston by this commission. The candidate's only qualification is his endorsement of Envision Evanston 2045. This endorsement of this proposal makes him automatically unqualified for me. I have attended this commission meetings for over 20 years. This is not a position for a novice. I haven't heard him mention one word about small landlords in Evanston and their concerns, endorsement for affordable housing through the land trust, and they will do with this commission of 2045 place upon the Fifth Ward gentrification on steroids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Brian Hanson, who will be followed by John Story Williamson, and then Linda Damaschek.
Hi, everyone. Good to be here. I'm here to speak in strong endorsement of Pastor Luke Harris-Ferrari for the Land Use Commission. And so much of this debate has turned on qualifications. What is it that one needs to be qualified to do to sit on the Land Use Commission? Some people, we want to have deep technical skills and perspectives. Other people, we actually want to represent different parts of our community, different interests in our community, and different values. And how we make decisions about the best use of land in Evanston is by coming together and working through those differences of experiences, differences of knowledge, those different areas of care. And he brings three things that I think are incredibly important. One is a deep understanding of affordable housing, the importance of it in our committee. Not only community, not only is it something that the council has endorsed, I went through each and every of your websites, campaign websites, and read all your interviews. Every single one of you listed affordable housing as one of the most important issues that you wanted to work on in this next session. Yeah, too dumb. You're my representative. I can show you the language. So I think that's number one. Number two is we need differences in age and in ownership of housing, right? I am a guy in my 60s who has owned a single-family home for 25 years. There's a whole lot of experience I haven't got. We need to bring people who have younger experience, and we need to have people who are renters, because I don't know anything about that market. Finally, it's about skills, and it's about the skills of being able to work together with others, listen, and create compromises that reflect a diversity of opinions. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Story Williamson, who will be followed by Linda Damaschek, and then Noah Finkelstein.
Good evening, council members. John Story Williamson, Third Ward. I'm here to express my deep concern regarding Mayor Biss's appointment of Luke Harris-Ferrari to the Land Use Commission. This decision continues the troubling pattern of prioritizing political alignment over expertise in land use, planning, and zoning. Mr. Harris-Ferrari's close affiliation with Connections for the Homeless raises significant questions about potential conflicts of interest. Connections has been a vocal advocate for zoning reforms in Evanston, particularly aggressive upzoning of our single-family neighborhoods. They have actively participated in promoting the draft Envision Evanston 2045 Plan, which included proposals to end single-family zoning restrictions across Evanston. Additionally, Mr. Harris-Ferrari is the rector at Grace Lutheran Church, a donor to both Connections and Interfaith Action. Interfaith Action has also been actively involved in zoning discussions, including organizing events to explain zoning's impact on housing. Notably, Alderman Isles serves as the staff overnight shelter director for Interfaith Action. These overlapping affiliations raise concerns about potential conflicts of interest and the impartiality required for Land Use Commission decisions. I urge the council to reconsider the appointment and to prioritize candidates with demonstrated expertise in land use matters and a clear commitment to serving Evanston's aspirations without undue influence from advocacy groups.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Linda Damaschek, who will be followed by Noah Finkelstein.
Good evening, Linda Damaschek. I'm here for opposition to the Land Use Commission nominee Luke Harris-Ferrari due to his lack of experience and lack of relevant skills. Land Use Commission is one of the most important commissions of the city, and having technically skilled members who bring working knowledge to the discussions is vital to the effective administration of the city's development decision-making. An inexperienced policy advocate is an inappropriate nomination by the mayor and should be opposed by all city council members. In that regard, Sean Isles, a Third Ward council member, should recuse himself from voting tonight on the nomination of Luke Harris-Ferrari to the Land Use Commission as he has a conflict of interest as an employee of Interfaith Housing of Evanston. Instead, council members should vote to reappoint George Halleck to the Land Use Commission or someone else with appropriate technical, professional expertise that have already applied. Finally, the notice of this Wednesday's Land Use Commission does not have the revised third draft attached to it of the comprehensive plan. The public should have 14 days to review the third draft, it's a new draft, before any Land Use Commission would discuss the draft. It must be a public hearing, and it provide the public opportunity for public testimony to this new draft with adequate notice and time to review. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Noah Finkelstein.
Good evening, council. Congratulations to the new council members and all that. I'm here to just voice my support for Pastor Luke on the Land Use Commission. I don't have much more to add than what everyone has already said who supports Pastor Luke. I mean, the people who don't, all really good points. I support Pastor Luke, and obviously zoning is a very controversial issue in this town, something I've noticed in my few years here. And I think we had a great election just now where zoning was very much at the front of mind, at least from my vantage point. And I think that, you know, you all who were elected should really trust the mandate you were given, different mandates, but whatever, and make your choice off that. But this person really supports Pastor Luke for the Land Use Commission. Thank you all so much, and have a great night.
Thank you very much. This concludes the in-person portion of this evening's public comment. We now move to the online public comment, which will be Rena Campbell.
Hello, thank you. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Land Use Committee appointment. To begin, for anyone who has undergone any home search, renovation, or construction, you know how experts can often speed through details in order to get to action. A number of people have been vocal in the need to slow the roll on Envision Evanston, and they also encourage a diversity of housing, as we heard. We are fortunate to have applicants who have experience in building and zoning, but look at all the multi-unit buildings in downtown that are completely inaccessible for renters and first-time homeowners. And for the record, the number of storefronts, and the record number of storefronts that have been vacant in the downtown area, as was recently reported in a study, the phrase, "if we build it, they will come," has not always borne out in Evanston. I would argue that even when we had the best architects and planners, they did not always know what was best or needed for our community. I know the criticism is that Pastor Luke Harris-Ferrari is not as experienced with reviewing zoning as maybe others, but they have been very engaged in the discussions. We already have the requisite experts who are tied into the planning and execution, who will be involved and will make the final decisions. But consider the benefits of having a layperson on our committee, like in our court systems, to have a community member, like a jury of our peers, to be someone who will ask the questions that we need to understand and to be represented in the planning, not just to have professionals who have a stake in the investments. And if anyone knows-
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the finish. I'm sorry. I just wanted to add that in no other applicant has the person's gender identity brought up, and I would just like to encourage that we maintain that standard and that that shouldn't have anything to do with anyone's application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening. We now move on to the consent agenda. My understanding is that A11 remains in the Committee on Administration and Public Works, so will not be eligible for a vote on the consent agenda. And A19 is to be removed for potential introduction and action. Is there anything else that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda this No, 19.
18, A18.
A18.
Item AP1, the LUC appointment only.
I don't think you can do that.
Okay. Then item AP1?
So so far, we have A11, A18, A19, and AP1. Is there anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion. I will move approval of the consent agenda minus the following items, AP1, A11, A18, A19.
Second.
Councilmember Hatakakis moves approval of the consent agenda with the following four omissions, A11, A18, A19, AP1. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. With the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the four items previously enumerated is adopted. Now on item A18. Councilmember Sufferden, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move item A18, ordinance 23-025, amending Title I, Chapter 17, contracts with the City of the City Code.
I'll second. Councilmember Sufferden moves introduction of ordinance 23-025. Councilmember Hatakakis, seconds. Before we do any discussion at all, Councilmember Sufferden, do you want to explain what amendments or other decisions occurred at ANPW?
Sure. And Liza, tell me if I've got it wrong. So we added a waiver for local businesses, and we adjusted the threshold for the waiver to a 5-4 vote. Got one other thing?
Good evening, Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza, members of council. You're correct that APW amended the RBO to add a general waiver provision that would apply to any portion of the RBO, that the vote required for such a waiver would be 5-4, and then also that the committee removed by amendment provision on project labor agreements due to some recent litigation developments.
Oh, that's right.
And the waiver only applies to local, right?
Yes, yeah, my apologies. And the waiver would also only apply to local businesses.
And while we're here, since we all have the difference between absolute and simple majorities on the brain this month, apparently, is it a five-vote waiver or a majority of those present?
I believe what the committee recommended was a simple majority rather than a supermajority.
Of those present.
I think what we said was 5-4. I think what we meant was majority.
I believe we meant the majority of those present.
I agree. That seems to be the intent of the council members.
Understood. Okay. So we now move on. So there's been the motion, together with the explanation of the motion. And so we now move on with discussion. Councilmember Hatakakis. So this is a question for Liza again. So with the amendment for the waiver for local businesses, are we, how are we defining local? Is it Evanston-only registered businesses? Or can you just explain that, please?
So one of the changes that this ordinance makes is creating a new preference for local businesses that are within a certain radius of Evanston. And that's actually a great question that the committee did not clarify whether this applied to Evanston businesses only or the new expanded category of local businesses. I believe local was the rule that the committee used, or was the word that the committee used.
Okay, I guess for me, I know this is for introduction, but before we get-
I guess for me, I know this is for introduction, but before we get to our next meeting, if we could decide what "local" means, because that can be, Illinois could be considered local, but, and in talking with Councilmember Burns, I think there is a real good reason to have, you know, carve out for Evanston businesses. I don't know what, how we wanted to find that. I could get behind local businesses if it's, you know, Evanston, Skokie, you know. But I think that's, hopefully, we can, I don't know if we should discuss that now here, or I think we can. So personally, I don't know how-
Let me just, let me just interject here. So, and just speaking about procedure, I would really hope that what we end this discussion with, if there's an affirmative vote, which I hope there will be, is like an exact understanding of what the document that's been voted for, so that what then appears on the agenda for action two weeks from tomorrow is a draft that people aren't surprised by.
Yeah. And I think, at least for me, probably the easiest would be to say Evanston businesses. I don't know if there's any discussion around how other municipalities have defined "local", like if it's a radius, or, I don't think we necessarily want to say, like, specific, go, you know, neighboring, neighboring town by neighboring town, but I think I would lean towards personally having it Evanston businesses only, but I'm open to discussion, and that's what we're trying to figure out here.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Kelly.
To that last point, we do have a working definition, I believe, in our ordinance for what it means to be a local business. I know the new, the expanded definition, I thought the intent of that was only to apply in a situation where there were no, there were no businesses, local businesses, is the way we've traditionally defined it, that apply for a bid, and, and I think we give, if you could help me, Liza, it's a, there's a certain percentage where if you come in close enough to another bidder, you get a certain percentage if you're local. And so, if there wasn't a local business in the way we traditionally defined it, somebody that was in, I think we said five miles, could also take advantage of those extra points or extra consideration, additional consideration, if the two bids were the same or, you know, close enough in price.
Yes, that's correct. Our current ordinance gives Evanston businesses a preference if they come in within 5% of the lowest responsible bid. The new ordinance would create a preference for businesses within five miles of Evanston if they come in within 3%, so it's a lower threshold.
Yeah. And then, but for this, we could just keep it to the way, the way we've traditionally, you know, looked at local businesses, which is, I want to say they have an Evanston address for at least a year, or something like that. There might be some other things involved, but we have a definition. Okay, thank you. And then, the only other thing is that, for me, what this, what I would appreciate support on is, it's a very specific area. And for those who don't know, I was the chair of the NWDB Committee. I think we had, I can't remember how many meetings, at least four, maybe, meetings where we took a look at this, maybe more, and also did a lot of research, looking into, actually reaching out to the, the person that is in charge of the USDL Certified Apprenticeship Program, the person that would actually review these applications, talked to them, talked to people that offered similar programs. Point being, did a lot of work on this. And the one area where I'm most concerned, and where I would like to see us, an amendment I would like to see is for local contractors, or local general contractors, if they can show that their, that their workers have kind of relevant experience or comparable experience in whatever particular trade, for carpenters, it's typically the way the unions do it, I believe, laborers and carpenters, it's two years or 2,400 hours, that even without a 5-4 vote, right, they would just be exempt from this. And, and I'm, the only concern that I've heard tonight is that the amount of, that it would take time for staff to evaluate it, which is why I'm okay with that just applying to local contractors. This is a political body, right? This is a, we're not, and so, one, to me, it doesn't make sense to, especially for local contractors, to create uncertainty when, when it isn't necessary. And if somebody doesn't know, if we haven't established any guidelines to determine whether or not somebody would qualify for a waiver, that creates a whole lot of uncertainty that's not good for business, and it doesn't make sense to put local contractors to that in particular, and that's the folks that I feel like I, we all directly represent. And so, what I would like to do between meetings is, is really carve something out for local contractors that, that would exempt them from this apprenticeship program if they can produce the documents, tax returns, 1099s, to show that their workers have kind of comparable experience in each trade. I know what that looks like for laborers and carpenters, at least the way the union handles it. I want to take a little bit more time to see what that should be for other trades. But almost certainly, and I'll let Mayor Biss decide how he wants to handle this, would like a carve-out specifically for Evanston contractors as it, as it relates to the proposed apprenticeship requirement.
Councilmember Kelly?
I wanted to address the local, and I think Councilmember is exactly right, that we prioritize local, but next in line would be for contractors that are within a five-mile radius. So, there is an order of prioritization there. So, I think that's important, that, you know, if we, if we can't, if somebody can't meet the requirements within the Evanston boundaries, but there's somebody who can who's from Skokie or Rogers Park, then that's a next-in-line preference in terms, in terms of how we prioritize. And truly, I think that Councilmember Burns, this umbrella waiver does meet that in the sense that if we have a local firm that meets all their, that meets everything except for one of the provisions, and so, we prioritize local, but they meet everything except one, and if that one is the apprenticeship, that could be the exemption that gets brought back to us for a vote. It could be something else. It could be the self-performing. But I think that's why we thought that it would make most sense to have this overarching umbrella waiver, so that any single provision could be waived for a local business because of our interest in hiring locally. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure we made it clear that the project labor agreement paragraph was deleted. Did we say that while I was looking up other stuff? Okay, good. So, that's clear. I am supportive of reducing the radius from 15 to five miles for nearby businesses. If we need to make a motion to make that happen, I'm prepared to do that right now, I will make that motion to make that change to the nearby business section to make it five instead of 15 miles.
And, I'm sorry, could you do that in writing, please?
It's in writing on page 165 of 184 of the packet, presented to us as an option from staff.
Got it, okay.
And I'll second that. Somehow, I thought we, we meant to have, that was supposed to be, so yes, I second that.
Okay. So, Councilmember Newsma moves to pick the option in the packet that reduces the radius to five miles, is that correct?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly seconds. Is there any discussion on this amendment? So, let's just have a vote right now, then. Would the clerk please take the roll on the motion to amend to implement the five-mile radius?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none against, the motion carries, and ordinance 23-0-25 is amended, as just discussed, by replacing the 15-mile radius with five-mile radius. Councilmember Newsma, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to take another swing at the size and scope section of the ordinance and suggest increasing the floor from $25,000 to $100,000, noting that only nine of the 60 contracts approved in the last three years would be affected by this change. Of those nine contracts, two were non-union, and, give me a second to click, that represents, would represent less than half a percent of the total contract value of the combined projects. So, I am going to make a motion to make that change as indicated on page 165 of 184, replacing $25,000 with $100,000. And the reason for this is to spare staff and the businesses the burden of, of additional paperwork and bureaucracy for small contracts for limited dollar amounts. Is that sufficient information to make that motion?
No, but I think the motion fails for lack of a second.
Anybody?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, then, this needs to be in writing, because it's, though, what you said was clear, the $100,000 number is not in the packet.
Okay.
Told you guys I was going to be uptight about this, this council. I meant every word. So, while, while Councilmember Newsma is quickly writing this up, Councilmember Newsma moves to amend ordinance 23-0-25 by increasing the $25,000 threshold that is, in fact, referenced, for instance, in the bottom of page 165, although that's the description, not the ordinance. And Councilmember Isles seconds that amendment.
Give me a second. What's, CC? It's not coming up, okay. There we go. Does that include Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay. On the way.
So, the email should be, has just arrived. And, so now, is there discussion on this motion, this amendment? Councilmember, okay, so, all right, so Councilmember Kelly, who has three minutes and 50 seconds left.
Okay. I'll keep it quick, then. I think the vast majority, we've seen of the hundreds of RBOs, that this really is a common where we've set it, and this has functioned well. And also, given that we do have this umbrella waiver, that gives us the opportunity, if that's, if that's the, the one sticking point, we can always move that. And I wonder if either Jeremy or Liza, you could speak to your research on RBOs in Illinois or outside of Illinois and their thresholds.
Yes, happy to. You're correct that there are over 100 units of local government in Illinois alone that have enacted responsible bidder ordinances. There's some variation in where they set their dollar threshold, but the vast majority of them are at $20,000 or $25,000. There are a handful of outliers on either end. One said that theirs is low as $1, and then there were three that set it at $100,000, one for the apprenticeship, or two for the apprenticeship requirement only, and one $100,000 for all the requirements. So, $100,000 would put us at the very, very high end of that spectrum.
Thank you so much. So, I'd like to say, just given that we're adding that other special little piece, which is that waiver, I don't see any reason for us to go up to that high end. Thank you.
The only other person who signed up to speak is Councilmember Burns. I think you were signed up before this amendment was, was-
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll keep you in the queue, and then, would the clerk please take the roll on this motion to amend by replacing the $25,000 threshold with $100,000?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Isles?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
No.
With three in favor and five against, the motion fails, and the amendment is not But Councilmember Newsma, you still have the floor if you want it.
I am done for now.
In that case, we now, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Burns, who has one minute left. Oops, sorry, Councilmember Rogers.
Thank you. I have a quick question for staff, maybe, because this will maybe make your life easier or harder, so I'd like to get your opinion on it. So, we currently have that if they complete certifications, it runs in the calendar year in order to reduce the amount of paperwork that everyone's having to generate all the time, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there, is there a reason it has to run on calendar and not for like a 12-month period? Because if someone comes in in December, they may turn around and have to do it again the month later.
That's, as you're, you're correct that it's currently drafted to run by calendar year, but if council wanted to change that to 12 months, that certainly-
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't, like, if I made that suggestion, I wasn't going to-
No, no, you're correctly understanding the draft in front of you.
For creating hardships. Okay. That being the case, then I would like to make an amended motion, an amendment to the motion, which I have in writing and am getting ready to send out to everybody, so that it would read instead, it's on page 137, instead of reading, "A bidder who has previously completed these certifications need not submit new documentation until December 31 of that calendar year," changing that to, "A bidder who has previously completed these certifications need not submit new documentation for a period of 12 months."
Just to, so, I accidentally left this slide with Councilmember Newsma, and have been, my stomach's been churning ever since. So, you guys are not amending the ordinance? You're amending, like, the discussion around the ordinance?
My, my understanding was that you wanted us to have-
Like a, like a precise amendment of the ordinance itself, and the ordinance, it doesn't begin until page 142. Because what you're, you're sort of amending the memo that describes the ordinance, basically.
So, I'll withdraw my amendment to make, make everybody easier, but I would like to see that as a change in the, in the process, and if that-
Yeah. I mean, no, it's, I'm, I'm both trying to make a point, because I think it's an important point, and it's not, it shouldn't be hard to fix that, and also, I think we all know what you're trying to do, which I'm guessing most people support. But I do, I just want to reiterate, I really don't want us to be in a situation in two weeks, or two weeks and a day, where people are surprised by what's in the, what's in the packet. So, I'm trying to become more uptight about this, because we've had some bad experiences. But I think, I mean, maybe, Liza, can you come forward and just explain where in the ordinance itself this language occurs?
So, if you look in your packets on page 156, item number eight at the bottom of that page, titled Certification by Calendar Year, that's where the change would need to go.
So, if you could just change your, if you could send another email to reflect that spot in the packet and what the amendment looks like, then we can move forward.
Yep. Give me just a second here to open that up.
Yeah, this will be an amendment, and it's, it's just, so, right now, what it says is like, we certify by 2025, and if you give the certification in November, it's not very useful. Instead, what Councilmember Rogers is proposing is that every individual certification sets a year-long clock-
Right.
-so that it applies for a full-
Understood. But it's not just in the memo, so, so I'll second that amendment.
Yep. So, Councilmember Rogers moves to amend the certification by calendar year process so that it applies for a full 12-month period, rather than until December 31 of the calendar year that contains it. Councilmember Kelly seconds. Councilmember Rogers is furiously typing over there. I will stand at ease for just a second.
All right. I sent another one out.
Perfect. And the new one arrives with, with the correct page citation and all the correct words, too. A win-win for all of us. Is there any discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the role on this amendment to address this year issue?
You can send that to me, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haragaris?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none against, the motion carries, and ordinance 23-0-25 is again amended. Councilmember Rogers, you still have the floor if you want it? Okay. In that case, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Burns for a second time with a minute left.
So I'd like to make a motion, and then I'll, hopefully I'll get a new, you know, a little bit more time so I can explain this, but creating, so I'm making a motion to create an exemption for Evanston-based businesses using the traditional definition of local business that allows qualifying companies to opt out of the apprenticeship program requirement in ordinance 23 or 25, provided they can demonstrate that their employees have received sufficient on-the-job training. This exemption will be closely modeled after the existing apprenticeship waiver programs used by construction trade unions. I'd appreciate a motion so I can explain this in the time that I have.
Councilmember Burns moves to amend ordinance 23-0-25 to create an exemption for Evanston-based businesses.
It's a new thing.
I don't want to flag that I'm, this is like where the issue's come up, like I generally don't know what this would do to the text of the ordinance, but will, at least for a person of discussion, will allow it. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Councilmember Burns?
I think there still needs to be a little work on that, but thank you, Mayor. So I guess, I'm trying to see, figure out a way to explain this as quickly as I can because there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this. And I think the way I'm going to start is, is that as proposed, in order for a local, a contractor to, to meet this requirement, they would most likely have to become signatory to a union. That means that all of your work will have to be union work. So if you had a book of business that was non-union, you'd have to abandon that to become signatory to a union, which might work for newer contractors, but would be difficult for somebody that is literally paying their mortgage and sending children to school based on that book of business, who sometimes may bid on, on, you know, government prevailing wage work, and sometimes they may not. And so the workaround that, again, for just, for just apply for Evanston local contractors is literally taking a page out of the book of construction trade unions. Right now, construction trade unions already have a way where somebody could go from off-the-street, as I understand it, to journeyman if they can show that they have the relevant on-the-job training, right? They, they, they don't have to go through their, the, the construction trade union's own apprenticeship program if they can show that they've worked, at least I think it's 24 hours, 2,400 hours, I'm sorry, for laborers and carpenters. And then the reason why there still needs to be some work, I need to know what that would look like for, for the other trades. But as I said in the amendment, I wanted to closely model after what, what they would require, right? In order for somebody to move from, you know, from, from on the street to a journeyman in whatever trade. And so I'm only asking for this, again, specifically for local Evanston contractors as we traditionally defined it. If they can't produce the records, right, the tax returns, et cetera, they still could qualify for the waiver. But this would give a local Evanston contractor the ability to not have to go through this very uncertain political process to determine whether or not they'd be eligible for a right waiver, and so long as they can show that they meet the standards in the same way that the construction trade unions allow, that they could bypass all of that. So that, that's what this, this would do. Thank you.
And so then, and again, I'm not being flip here, like, this is, this, so this, I think we kind of, we understand where you're getting at. This is not an amendment to the, to the ordinance itself.
Yeah.
Is your goal to work with staff and others during the course of the next, you know, leading up to the next meeting to have the amendment ready for the packet so folks could consider it then?
Exactly, yeah. And again, because I know it, from talking to the representatives we have here, I know, I have a sense of what that our requirement is for laborers and carpenters, but not for the other trades. And so instead of trying to rush this, that's why I went out there earlier, to try to get a better sense of what their own requirement is. If we can have some time between introduction and action, I think I can figure out exactly what that is pretty easily for each trade.
Okay. Can I ask you then to withdraw the motion, because there isn't really an amendment that is going to get a vote? But we'll, the discussion will go on.
I mean, I want, I would like the same thing we just did with Councilmember Rogers' amendment. We can, if staff can help me figure out how to amend this, but there is going to be, need to be some work between now and the next meeting. As long as we provide sufficient notice, it should be fine. We just don't want to do, and I'm sorry, the, the thing I thought we were trying to prevent from doing is, is making changes on the fly without it being noticed. But with 48-hour notice, this new language, right, if, if, if this is adopted, as I just said, we'll work on the language, we'll get it into the packet 48 hours before the next meeting, is, is what OMA requires.
I think I can possibly simplify this conversation a little bit because there is an experience exemption language in the proposed menu of amendment options that's in your packet today. It's on page 163, item B at the bottom of that page. And this was, this was, when, when this went to APW last month, this was one of the options that APW asked staff to write up. This was our best effort at writing this up, looking at how unions have constructed their exemptions for workers who are at journeyman status or have, can show through their payroll records that they've done a certain amount of work that's consistent with the type of work on the project. This was one of the issues that APW considered and decided to go with the waiver route instead. And I think the concern that has been raised, that staff have, is that this would require both bidders and staff to go through hundreds of hours, multiple years of W2 records, other kinds of work records, and the waiver process is a simpler way to achieve the same goal. And I think for small bidders, it's going to be much more burdensome for them to put together multiple years of payroll records for all of the workers on a project than to simply request the waiver. But the, what, what this experience exemption would look like is in the packet.
And my response to that is, again, this, this wouldn't exclude them from being able to request the waiver. It would just give them a faster track if they do have all the records. And I've talked to contractors that might be impacted by this, and they said they could put together the records, that it wouldn't be an issue for them, for those contractors. And if it is, again, the waiver is still an option. It's just if they don't want to go through an uncertain political process, and they would rather just produce records that they have, right, it's on them to produce it, then I would like an option for them to do that.
Councilmember Davis, your light was on and then off again. Is it?
I just have a quick.
Councilmember Davis?
I just have a quick question. Bobby, what you're describing, is it different than what Liz said was taken out? Or do you just want that take, put back in, basically?
I think for the sake of this meeting, I'd be fine with, you know, I'd have to quick, if they're, if they're saying they modeled it off of what the construction trade unions are doing, then it's probably what I'm requesting. I just need to know what page that is on, because I did not see that, but.
It's page, it starts at the very bottom of page 163. It's option one, experience exemption, and it's mostly on page 164 of the packet.
Yeah, see, and I'm in the, I'm in the part of the packet that's just about RBO. So what, do you know what page it is on that?
I think it's page four.
Thank you.
There are 29 of 36, if you're.
You said it's 436?
29 of, page 29.
Oh, it's 29. I thought you said four. Okay. Okay, so it's option?
Option one, experience exemption.
On 29, I don't see apprenticeship program, okay, so experience exemption. Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it. I think my standards would probably be a little more than this, but if we need something to approve, I'd be more than happy as approving this and, again, working to see if there's any additional changes that we will make, really to, to, to increase the standard, if anything, not to diminish it, but this is a good start.
So your motion was to amend the ordinance by, with this language, the experience exemption language that we're talking about?
Again, and I apologize, I missed this particular update. Eliza, you've heard me describe what I'm trying to achieve. Do you feel like this achieves that? The three, whatever mayor business, a 3-1, a 3B, or 2B? Yeah, 2B, 1? 2B?
Yes. Again, this, this is staff's best effort at capturing the conversations that happened at MWD EBE and at APW last month, and reducing that experience exemption concept to language. But I think no matter how you draft this, the burden, the paperwork burden on bidders and staff will be significant.
Yeah. Yeah, this is probably it. And again, if we're, what I also like about this is that it's possible with a 5-4 vote that we could waive a requirement that actually diminishes the quality of workers that we have on a site by majority vote of the council, whereas with this, they're actually showing that those workers have the experience, right, which the intent of this, and if I still have more time, if I could just finish.
Let me interject for a second, because actually, well, well, actually, Councilmember Davis had the floor all along. You were just answering her question, so.
That, that I, that I respect.
If you want him to keep answering your question, that's cool, but it is, it is your floor.
That makes sense, I'm sorry.
No, I, I was done.
Okay. Cool. Good job, everybody. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, sorry about that. This, if somebody wants to meet the requirement, it feels like the burden is on them to produce the information, and it, it, it feels like it more closely captures the intent, as I understand it, having sat through a discussion around this probably more than anybody else up here, which is, the point of this is to make sure that the quality of our workforce that are on job sites in Evanston are the best that they can be. This gets at that. Somebody can show that their workers have the experience that we're looking for, whereas, again, if we're just, we're allowing a waiver, 5-4 vote, not only is it, is it, is it unpredictable, but it also can lead to, it, it could lead to the exact opposite of what I believe we're trying to achieve here. So, again, I would, as a start, I'm, I'm happy to adopt what's here because it's, it's already in our packet as, as a, as a start.
Okay. So there's two people signed up to speak, Councilmembers Newsma and Kelly. Did you want to speak to this amendment? Okay, so we'll start with Councilmember Newsma for a second time, who has 3:15 left.
My question was just going to be procedural. If we're clear on what we're voting for, I'm fine to move forward. If not, I would be happy withdrawing my second and agreeing to second this when it comes back to us after some homework is done and it becomes abundantly clear what we're voting on.
I mean, I would say, it is clear to my satisfaction what the vote is because there's text in the packet. I also think it's a, so voting on that's fine, I'm comfortable with it. It's also fine to withdraw the motion and simply have whatever collection of council members work with, whatever collection of staff and outside experts and advocates to have something ready. The one thing I would hope, given that the next vote would be an action vote, is that alternative would be in the packet before the weekend, not crafted on the fly on Tuesday the 27th. So I'm cool with either option personally.
I'm clear with what we're voting on. If the mayor is and everyone else is, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. At this time, no one is asking to speak, who hasn't spoken at least twice, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with 3:20 left.
So just to be clear, for local businesses, there's a carve-out on every single provision in this already. And I'm concerned that by moving to, and I, and I respect that because I understand, Councilmember Burns, that you want to tighten that, that one particular provision of the RBO for our local businesses. So I, I think that's, you know, an important aspiration, to want that. However, I think, you know, we've heard from staff, unless we can figure out a way to make that less burdensome, I don't see it being very realistic in terms of staff hours. So, again, we have this, you know, overarching, you know, waiver that, where we look at local businesses and provide, if they were to come, score really high, where we would look at waivers on any one of those items. But again, I respect your interest in wanting to tighten that one provision, but I don't think it will. I'm just, I feel like it might be, it's just not going to be realistic.
Councilmember Burns, you're way over time. Could you speak very quickly?
Unless we're, we're going to provide waivers without any guidelines or standard, like, at some point, we're going to have to say, for you to receive a waiver, here's what we're looking for from you. And so at some point, staff is going to have to evaluate something, unless we're going to do this randomly and arbitrarily. Like, you know, so, which is, I think, fine if that's what I want to do for some of this. I'm just asking for, for at least this little piece, let's just add some clear guidelines so that, that people know what to expect as it relates, again, to this apprenticeship requirement.
All right. So the item under consideration at this time is the amendment that is in the apprenticeship training program required section that's labeled on a variety of different page numbers in different contexts as the option one, experience exemption. Is there any confusion about what this is, what is under consideration at this time? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the role?
This is on the proposed amending it to go with that one provision, tightening the?
Exactly. This is the, the, it's an amendment that basically says you can demonstrate through, for instance, you know, past tax records, the number of hours of experience of the workers to meet the requirement.
No.
Yes.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Yes, okay. Okay. Y'all, you guys need to, like, let me catch up, okay? It's okay. So Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
No.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haragaris?
Aye.
With six in favor and two against, the motion carries, and ordinance 23-0-25 is amended. Seeing no further discussion, there've been now a few amendments. There was the Rogers year amendment, there was the Burns demonstration of experience exemption amendment, council, there was the Newsma five-mile amendment. All three were adopted. So will the clerk now please take the role on ordinance 23-0-25 with those three amendments incorporated?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haragaris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. Ordinance 23-0-25, as amended a number of times, is introduced. It will be on the city council agenda for final action on Tuesday, May 27th. Thanks all. The next item on the agenda is item A19, which is here because of consideration for introduction and action. Councilmember Sufferden, do you care to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Sure. I move that we suspend the rules for item A19, ordinance 41025, authorizing the city to borrow funds from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Public Water Supply Loan Program.
So you're spending, you're moving, are you moving to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Okay. So Councilmember Sufferden moves to suspend rule 20.1 so that ordinance 41-0-25 can be introduced and acted upon in the same evening. Is there a second?
I second.
Councilmember Rogers, seconds. Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to suspend the rule and allow for a single vote?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haragaris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion receives the required unanimous vote, and rule 20.1 is suspended so that ordinance 41-0-25 may be introduced and acted upon in one evening. Councilmember Sufferden, do you have a motion?
I move introduction and action of ordinance 41025, authorizing the city to borrow funds from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Public Water Supply Loan Program. from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Public Water Supply Loan Program.
Second.
Councilmember Sufferden moves final passage of ordinance 41-0-25. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddakaris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 41-0-25 is passed. Now is there a motion on item AP1?
I'll move item AP1, approval of appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
I'll second. Councilmember Kelly moves approval of appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Councilmember Haddakaris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone for their public comment. I really appreciate all the insights that everyone had. Just wanted to make a note, though, you know, you all gave comments without knowing very much about the other applicants who applied for this position. In particular, many of you mentioned that Luke is young. The, what was it? The city planner, the land use planner with over 10 years of experience is actually 32. So Luke is 31, and we had a candidate that was 32 and had 10 years of land use planning experience. I also would ask that, I think it's strange that we assume that we can't have a candidate with the qualities that you all expressed and interest in in Luke, in addition to a candidate that has demonstrated experience in this role. So I think that we can find someone that's young, that has experience as an architect or a land use planner. As I've demonstrated, we already had at least one applicant of that type. And if we are looking for someone in favor of zoning or upzoning and we want that perspective, I do not think that it is incompatible with someone with experience. And I'll also have to say that, you know, in my own opinion, I grew up on food stamps. I qualified for free lunch my entire life. I did not get on Section 8 until I was 14, but that was only because if you've actually been housing insecure, you'd know that the waitlist for Section 8 is very long. And I have never had the privilege of being able to be underqualified for a position. I've never gotten a position over someone else who had higher credentials. And so I'll say that this is a soft spot for me. I am one of the first, I am the first black person to represent the 7th Ward. And I don't think it's a coincidence that I have an Ivy League degree, that I went to University of Chicago for law school, and that I work for a company that is well-known for being, for pushing out very smart people. And so quite frankly, I find this appointment to some degree insulting. And also the idea that we can't have the characteristics, like someone came up and said that we need a good communicator on the land use commission, that was rude. We have eight people in the land use commission, and to suggest that none of them are good at communicating is like strange. But also, you know nothing about the candidates who also applied for this position, to suggest that Luke is the best communicator or that the other ones are not qualified in that way. And so I would like us all to think about that as we're making this decision.
Councilmember Isles?
A number of the public comment speakers brought up the idea that I work for Interfaith Action of Evanston, I'm the overnight shelter director. Luke's faith community is part of Interfaith Action, it's one of over 40 faith communities. I just wanted to confirm with council that I'm not in conflict here.
Thank you, Councilmember Isles. Alex Rugge, Corporation Council, looking at the city's ethics code under Title I, that is not a conflict of interest, and you are able to vote.
Okay, I appreciate that. Can I continue with my comments? I still...
Please.
So I find Luke to be, he has direct experience with affordable housing. I find him to be a passionate, informed, thoughtful member of our community. I think he can service well, both as a younger person and as a renter. I spent about 10 years on the library board. You know, I was one of four librarians. There were dozens of people on the boards that I served on, and I think the best version of those boards were boards with a variety of viewpoints and a diversity of experience. And I think that Luke can definitely bring that to the land use commission.
Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I took the opportunity to meet with the candidate, with the nominee. We met over lunch, or met over coffee, discussed sort of what his interests were, what he thought he was able to bring to land use commission. And I have to say that our conversation was very cordial, and I was impressed with his commitment to affordable housing in Evanston and making sure that it's someplace that people can move to and live. However, I do have a number of reservations about his overall qualifications for this position. Outside of recommending for the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance, affordable housing is a very small part of what land use does. I mentioned to the mayor in my letter to him that if Mr. Harris Faray was nominated to housing and community development, I would be 100% supportive of that. I think that's a great place for them to do the work that they are interested in doing and accomplishing great things for Evanston. I do respect the mayor's ability to nominate whoever he feels is appropriate to nominate, but I also take very seriously the role that we're giving, that we're given as council members to sit and consent on that nomination. And at this point, I just, I just don't think that the skills are there for the work that needs to be done as we move forward through this important time. And I would hope that we can find someplace for someone like them who is very interested in the city and making sure the city achieves a lot to put their skills and knowledge to work. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Kelly, followed by Haddakaris.
I guess I want to start by just saying that, I said this a lot over the last few months, that, you know, the mayor's role in Evanston is quite limited when compared to strong mayor form of governments. And, but the one area where the mayor does have some influence, and obviously, because what you're saying up here today, it still needs to be confirmed by this council, is to appoint people to BCCs. And so in my opinion, that is the way a mayor in a, with a limited influence in this form of government can try to think about how to compose a BCC in a way that helps to deliver on the things that he told his constituents in the community were important to him, were important to them, et cetera. And so I don't think there was anything, I don't think there's anything improper with that. That's just, to me, the way that works when you have that ability as a mayor. And then as council up here, then we have to use our own lens to determine whether or not that, you know, we feel we agree with that composition. So I just wanted to kind of start off with that. I think for me, as a renter, I think the only renter up here now, representation does matter. We do know that the most consequential thing that this body is going to do over the next several months is to rewrite comprehensive plan and zoning. That's just a fact. And I talked to Mayor Bis about this. I was like, when is the next appointment coming up? And I think you said December. And so the next time we have an opportunity to get somebody that's a renter, that has experience, I'm sure there's some advocacy in there, wall advocates for different causes. But what I really saw is somebody that has, was an integral part of being a part of affordable housing development, right, in this community and sitting with people that needed housing, that were housing insecure, that may have been displaced and found a place to stay in this development that they were a part of. And I think that is an incredibly important perspective that is not often a part of these discussions that we're having on these committees. And I've been in meetings where people literally just said, if you're not a homeowner, like your opinion doesn't matter. I mean, that, literally, people, that's how people, what people feel in Evanston. I hope that view is not up here, but I hear it all the time. And the fact that they were, had the confidence to say that in front of a renter just shows like how kind of deep that idea is, is that if you're not a taxpayer in a single-family kind of way, because I always remind people, even renters pay tax, all that stuff is passed through to us, that your opinion doesn't matter. And I think that's the very reason why today I have to say it does matter. It is important that we have those perspectives. We're not going to have another opportunity until December to get that perspective. And by then, I think it's possible that we may be wrapped up from talking about comprehensive or zoning plan at that point. At least, I hope we'll be, you know, well on the way. And I guess I'll close by saying I don't necessarily disagree fundamentally with what's being asked. We want the right expertise on these committees. I believe that the right, we need to think broader in any type of expertise. But also what I learned is that we have an architect currently. We have somebody that is like an expert in steel or something like that. I'm hoping that means he's a contractor, because that, but we were trying to figure out who that was and what they did. But I would say contractor for now, so potentially a contractor, architect, a planner in Lynnwall. And I think there was one more. So some of what I'm hearing, we already have on the committee. What I know we don't have is what I just shared. And if we had another opportunity in the next few months, next two or three months, I might feel comfortable going back out and trying to find somebody else with the type of expertise that I think some of my colleagues up here want. I don't think we have the time. And the last thing I'll say is, I think what will, what would help guide these type of conversations in the future is if you look at the Economic Development Committee, it's very prescriptive about the type of membership that we want on that committee. And I think that's the case with ACDC as well. You know, and I would be happy to co-refer this. Let's just say what we want, because then it won't be left up to discussion. If we want three out of the whatever members to have this particular experience, let's write that in the qualifications. I'm reading right here, you know, six members shall be, you know, economic development professionals or economists. Like, it's very prescriptive about what it's looking for. We can do the same for the land use commission. I think we should do that. I'd be happy to co-refer that.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Haddakaris, followed by Sufferden.
Thank you. So I deeply appreciate the work of Pastor Luke, and I especially appreciate the work of Interfaith Action Evanston and your work, Sean. Really, really revere that work that you all do for our community. I'm concerned that we have community members with tremendous expertise who have given their time, who've shown up. I mean, I, you know, George Hallock's expertise, he's worked with HUD, he's worked with CHA, he's worked at the Urban Land Institute. We couldn't, I think that we'd be hard-pressed to find someone with the kind of expertise and commitment that George Hallock has. And so I have a serious issue when someone would like to serve his second term and we're choosing some but not others when they have this kind of, you know, these sort of qualifications. That, to me, reeks of a little bit of political abuse. And I'm sorry, but, you know, he's served his time, he's done well. He is the one that actually led us to move forward with the comprehensive plan. He pushed on this. And, you know, has that institutional knowledge. So it really doesn't make any sense on a, you know, on an expert level in terms of delivering for residents a strong comprehensive plan, strong representation. And as Councilmember Davis said, he also has tremendous communication skills and much else that was referenced in, about Pastor Luke Harris Faray. So, I mean, that to me is disturbing. Mayor Bis, you've complained before, there aren't enough people signing up for these, you know, we have all these vacancies, and here we have someone of this profound expertise, I mean, really profound. You know, he's done high rises, mixed income development, senior living, commercial historic preservation projects, he's worked on the other side facing land use commissions. So, you know, to choose not to reappoint him, I just can't support that. You know, or at least have moved forward with someone of similar expertise. So, again, I deeply respect, and I also want to say, you know, Sean, I really do. I revere your work, and I'm so happy to be working with you. I do feel it's awkward, it would be awkward for you and not even fair. I mean, you do, you have pecuniary interest, you do get a salary from Interfaith, which again, wonderful organization. And then the pastor who's a member, the organization relies on the church memberships for most of its funding. I just, it does, I'd like to know why this isn't a conflict of interest when there's salary involved. I just want to understand it. And it's not why this wouldn't be considered if you're receiving a salary from an entity that relies on these membership organizations for the funding.
That's not how Interfaith Action gets funding. It's not from the faith community.
I understand that more than 50% is from the churches.
I mean, I can check, but I don't think so. It's from individual donors.
But if that's the case...
I, just under the city's ethics code, I don't see a direct correlation between Councilmember Isles' professional salary and an appointment to the land use commission, because the pastor is a member of that church. It's just not there.
Is a participating member. That, as I understand it, though, and I'm, and again, Interfaith Action relies on the membership organizations for its funding, in large part.
They don't determine Councilmember Isles' salary.
But they depend on that to pay the salaries.
It's just too far removed.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just, again, I'm sorry, I just want to add, it's about perception, it's about the appearance. So again, I believe that you can be impartial, but really, if it were me, I just, I feel like you're in an awkward position, I would recuse myself. Thank you.
Councilmember Haddakaris, followed by Sufferden, followed by Newsma.
So I'll start things off by saying how excited I am to be voting yes for Pastor Luke being appointed on LUC, their 9th Ward constituent. Grace Luther is in the 9th Ward. Now, as far as like, I want to talk about qualifications and kind of build on what Councilmember Burns talked about. One of the things I've noticed here in Evanston is like, we have a very extremely narrow view of who we sometimes think of can make decisions for our community. Thinking back to like when I kind of jumped in the, you know, the ring here, I heard a lot of things about, you know, good qualifications, you know, oh, he's an engineer, he went to, you know, Northwestern. You know, I also heard like, I hadn't lived here long enough, and I've been here for like 30 years. So there's a, kind of a shifting narrative around who, whose opinion values is valued. And I think we do hear a lot about, well, renters are here, they're transient, they're not really part of the community. You know, Northwestern students are also part of the community, even though they're only here for four years. I think having differing views helps us make the best decisions. Every decision-making group that Evanston part of that have made good decisions, it's because they have a diversity of opinion. And so I think, you know, we heard a lot of good testimony from community members that see the value that Pastor Luke brings, and I'm excited to be voting yes.
Councilmember Sufferden, followed by Newsma.
Okay, yeah. So I am inclined to agree with Matt Rogers. It's a shame that these appointments have gotten so contentious. All the positive things that were said about Pastor Luke, I'm sure are true, but I'll be voting no.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cutting to the chase, I'm going to support Pastor Luke for this position. But I want to lament publicly the fact that this whole Envision Evanston process has gotten so contentious. I think one of the reasons it's become so contentious is that we, the former council, collectively made the mistake, and I'll own a ninth of that, to try and do too much at once. We tried to do the comprehensive plan and the zoning at the same time. That was too big of a bite. We've corrected that. We are now doing comprehensive plan first and the zoning second. But you can't put the cat back in the bag. All the anxiety that is in robust public discussions that are yet to come with zoning cannot be taken out of this comprehensive plan, which should be the kind of thing where we come together as a community with input from various stakeholders in a cross-section of the community to define who we are and where we are going, where we want to be, who we want to be over the next 20 years. And I really do feel that when we get to the end of this process, when our comprehensive plan is fully baked, when we've done zoning, the end result will be something that most of us are reasonably comfortable with. There's no way we're going to keep everybody 100% happy, let alone 100% thrilled. But I really think that the end of this process is going to result in something that we can all live with. And those are, that's the ball that my eye is on. What's going to get us to... with. And those are, that's the ball that my eye is on. What's going to get us to the end of that process is not expertise. We've got plenty of expertise. What's going to get us to the end of that process is community dialogue, finding common ground, having discussion from a values-based perspective, and working through this, you know, thicket of controversy to find something that works reasonably well for the most amount of people in town. And I'm not discrediting perspective or experience and qualifications. In fact, earlier this evening, I gave a shout out to a member of the Utilities Commission who has identified a revenue source that's going to bring in $100,000 to $300,000 a year to Evanston because they have some specific and unique expertise. So there certainly is a role, and an important one, for expertise and experience. But in this case, it's, what we need is, to get us through this process, is common ground, dialogue, and a values-based discussion. And for that reason, I'm happy to support Pastor Luke. I also want to make the point that this whole thing is not the mayor's initiative. In fact, the mayor is unlikely to vote on either one of these things, the comprehensive plan or the zoning ordinance. It's the city council driving this boat, and I just want to make that clear as well. So I'm done for now.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Rogers with three minutes and 15 seconds left.
I don't want to belabor the nomination here at all, but I do want to pick up on something that Councilmember Nusma said, which is that we do need to have a robust discussion. And I hope that as we move forward, we realize where the appropriate place to do that is. And unfortunately, that is not Land Use Commission. You don't discuss on Land Use Commission. We need to make sure that whatever we do timing-wise, we build in time to hear from the community. So that's my little plug for that.
Happy to work with you on that.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Isles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
No.
Councilmember Davis?
No.
Councilmember Rogers?
No.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
Aye.
With four voting in favor and four voting against, there's a tie. I break the tie by voting aye. With five in favor and four against, the three appointments to boards, commissions, and committees are approved. This brings us to, this brings us, this, I'd like to have order in the chamber, please. This brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Isles?
I don't have a report yet. I'll have one when we set the date for our first ward meeting. We're just trying to get all the parties involved together.
Councilmember Nusma?
The June ward meeting will be Tuesday, June 3rd, 7 o'clock at Robert Crown. June office hours, Saturday, the 14th, Flag Day at, that one's going to be at Berry Pike. And just a reminder to turn out your lights for the birds this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, I used call of the wards to get in what I wanted to sneak in. So again, by my count, we have currently on the Land Use Commission a contractor, professional planner, architect. And the one I missed was somebody with, I think, three years of plant commission experience in a different jurisdiction, but three years' experience. So I just wanted to get that on record, especially for our media. Thank you.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Two things. One, there's a ward meeting to discuss Carrey Park on Wednesday at Westminster Place. And then kind of a question of everybody, what do the Loyola kids want us to do?
I think they want us to write a letter of support.
But like individually, or are they looking for us all to sign one? I think they're gone. I'd like to help them. I don't know if, what the right way to route that is.
Why don't you, I've had some email exchanges with them, so we can, why don't you follow up with me later and we can connect with them. But I don't know that they were entirely detailed in their request, but I'm sure we can work on it.
I've read this multiple times, and I still don't quite know what the ask is, but...
Councilmember Davis?
My ward meeting will be May 19th at 7:00 PM. An email went out, and we will be discussing potential parking zone changes in Vision Evanston, Chicago Stars at Martin Field, and preparing, trying to prepare the community for concerts and events starting at Northwestern next year.
Councilmember Rogers?
On Wednesday, May 21st at 6:00 PM at the Levy Center, there will be a meeting to discuss improvements at James Park with our city engineer and other team. We'll be looking at the improvements that will be made along the pathways in the play, the play area in that park.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Nusma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding workers' compensation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120/2, Section C12.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves that the city council resolve itself into an executive session to discuss the items just enumerated. Councilmember Isles reluctantly seconds the motion. We, in lieu of a clerk, I'll take the roll. Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
An enthusiastic yes.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suffertin?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis? With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. And at 8:34 PM, the city council resolves into an executive session to begin in the council library immediately.